Our apologies for the slight delay in getting started here at 7:10. We were doing some preliminary work on budgeting for the years ahead upstairs in our work session and meeting with our police and fire chiefs and talking about their operations. So, again, my apologies for the slightly delayed start to the meeting. As Director Bennerott said, we're continuing to do these meetings in a hybrid sort of way. We did it all the way through COVID pandemic, post pandemic. Now, we're continuing that same process. Sometimes we have a public hearing, and there's always public comment, opportunity for community comment. No public hearing this evening, as Director Bennerott indicated, but there will be an opportunity for community comment. If someone wants to speak to the council about a matter that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, you're welcome to come forward. If you're in the audience, you'll have three minutes. You'll get a yellow light, a warning light, to come on when you've got 30 seconds left. Should be thinking about wrapping up your comments so we can treat everybody the same from a time standpoint. And then we'll do the folks that might be tuning in virtually after that. So, having provided that information, let me now ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll. Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson is absent. Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Rissler.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. Next is Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice throne.
Thanks, everyone. And now, we have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the agenda on the council or from a staff standpoint? Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Member Pierce, second by Member Rissler, to adopt the meeting agenda as published. Any further conversation on that issue? All those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. Before we go to community comment, I don't know if anyone in the audience is here with regard to item 7.2, which was intended to be a second reading on possibly adding to the code language dealing with the sale of inhumanely bred animals, the sale of inhumanely bred animals. And Councilmember Agnew has been working on this matter, and she's had some conversations, I think, with folks whose input we would like and she would appreciate, and I'm going to turn to her now. And I think we're going to be tabling this matter, but I'll let Member Agnew take it from here.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So, I had members of the Humane Society reach out, and, one, they're really excited that we're looking at this as a council, but they also had some suggestions on incorporating it back. But they just got back to me today on some of those suggestions. So, I just wanted to give us proper time to integrate those, consider the feedback and the impacts that it would have to the ordinance, and hoping to address this, table this until March 4th.
Okay. So, you would move that 7.2, the second reading of Ordinance 2025-01, be tabled to the March 4th, 2025 city council meeting for further discussion?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right. We've got a motion, second, to table item 7.2, which is Ordinance 2025-01, which would amend Chapter 8 concerning the sale of inhumanely bred animals to the March 4, 2025 meeting. Any further discussion on that matter? All those in favor of tabling the matter as stated to March 4, 2025 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. All right. Thanks, Member Agnew, for that update. Now, we're going to go back to community comment, and we'll take folks and see a few of our residents, fellow residents in the audience, who may want to come up and address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. So, feel welcome to come forward.
Hello, Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue. I'm back. At the last city council meeting two weeks ago, on the agenda was the item of a so-called conservation easement that was discussed. And what came up in that regard was the process and that the city does not have a set process or guidelines of how to do that sort of a thing. One thing that made me sit up a little bit more in my chair in the remarks toward the end of all of that discussion before the vote, or maybe it was after the vote, whichever. Mayor Hovland said, "We used a process that was kind of customized to the situation. We had a unique process we used." And then, a little further into that same minute, he referred to a conversation he'd had with a retired county engineer that told him, and I'm quoting exactly as it was in the recording, "Jim, don't let that concern about process cause you to kill a good project. Don't ever let process kill a good project." And I have an issue with that because process is something that gives us fairness, it gives us set guidelines, and when you do not have a process and you do not follow a process, even when one is established, what can happen is the city can be responsible for code violations, violations of what state statute says you are to do, and it can cause favoritism. And I have seen this happen personally with the house that was built, starting in 2008, two doors down from me. The city code was not followed. It was allowed to be placed where it should not have been placed by almost eight feet, and there were many violations of our city code as far as building procedures, process, inspections. It ended up with the house having a stop-work order finally put onto it a month after the first complaints, and the city was sued. This causes the taxpayers money, lawyer time, and this is not okay because process code was not followed. We need to make sure that this is, that we do not do things as they may have been done in the '60s, '70s, when, "Ah, I know you. You're good. It's fine. You can pass." But that's not okay anymore. Process and following what the city code and statutes, state statutes, say you are supposed to do is extremely important. When those are not done, it becomes a very shaky, dangerous situation. And our federal government, right now, is seeing huge issues because of that very thing happening. So, I don't want to see this done at a local level. If we've got the rules, follow them. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Weston. I appreciate your perspective on it. I'll address it in a few minutes here. Context. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Hovland and council members. My name is Steve Brown. I live at 5528 Halifax Lane. I want to comment in support of your use of TIF for redevelopment projects. One reason for my support is that I believe that TIF is good for taxpayers. How our taxes are calculated is incredibly complex, but this chart illustrates one very This was brought to my attention by a presentation made in 2019 by then-councilmember Mike Fisher. Councilmember Fisher said that we can think of the city's tax capacity as a pie, that big green circle that you see there. Each resident's share of the pie is represented by the small orange slice, this slice here. And then, if you think about a typical TIF project, it typically will involve a large piece of project, and so it's represented here as this large yellow slice. When property undergoes redevelopment, the property increases in value typically, and its share of tax capacity increases, so that yellow slice gets bigger. When that happens, the share of tax capacity for the resident decreases because the pie is not changing all that much in total size, and they pay less taxes than they would have paid if the project hadn't happened. So, one key question is, have TIF projects increased in value over time? And Mike answered that question with an example from Grandview Square project. And this is a project that took place between 1984 and 2010, and it involved the new library that was built in Adina at that time. And what Mike did was have the city resources put together this chart, which showed that over the time period for that project, the slice of that, that yellow slice of pie grew by 830%. That was almost eight times faster than the overall tax capacity of the city. So, the city grew, but that particular project grew a lot faster, and that meant that every single resident's share decreased a little bit. That's a good thing for taxpayers. So, the second question is, how have other TIF projects performed over time? So, in the recent HARA year-end review, they published this chart, and you don't have to read the numbers on this chart. You just have to recognize that there are a lot of numbers on the chart, and the fact that there are numbers on the chart says that all of those projects that are listed there, the ones that have completed construction are actually paying incremental taxes. That's a good thing. That's like paying interest on a bank account. If you were to invest in a bank and it didn't pay interest, you wouldn't be happy. If you're getting the interest, you're happy. And in this case, all the projects are paying interest, and so far, in the last six years, we've had about $28 million in incremental taxes generated by the projects in which the city invested TIF.
Thanks, Mr. Brown. I needed to have you wrap up your comments.
Yep. So, I am done.
Okay.
I don't want to overstate the importance of TIF. TIF is only 1.5% of total tax capacity, but I think it's important that we all recognize that it's beneficial to us as taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, let's turn to the virtual world and see if we have anybody tuning in.
I do have a caller. I'm going to unmute your line caller, and please begin by stating your full name and record, your full name and record, your full name and address for the record, please. Go ahead, caller.
Thank you. This is Connie Corino, 4509 Garrison Lane. So, let's see. First, I want to thank you for keeping community comment on tonight's agenda, and I urge you to continue to make this important communication tool a part of the community engagement and the public input process. And just a few moments ago, for example, there were two residents who presented issues that are of community interest and not, and beyond just presenting to five councilmembers in a closed-door session. So, I think it's really important that we keep community comment available. And my second point, it was actually through looking for an update on that proposal to remove community comment from the council agenda that lends me to this next point. And it certainly is easier and more direct to provide this note via either in person or in this virtual format than a closed-door session just with council. What I was looking for, the item I'm looking for, I won't mention it so that I comply with your guidelines and rules, but I found the new format to view council agendas online very cumbersome. For instance, the item I was looking for, it was really difficult to find the attachments. They were rather buried, and I wanted to learn more. So, I would encourage you to find an easier way to make all of the agenda items with the attachments for everything from the consent agenda all the way through the reports easier to access. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corino. All right. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Brown. Thanks, Ms. Corino. And Ms. Weston, I was probably a little bit too glib when I was commenting on what the county attorney told me, and I could see where you would come up with some concerns about that. It was in the context of where you'd otherwise had an adequate and appropriate sort of process that you don't want to let the, some concerns about the adequacy of that process, you know, otherwise kill a project that was worthwhile doing, and that's not even the most articulate way to express it. But the concerns that you've expressed really don't go so much to process as they do to enforcement, in my opinion. So, but nonetheless, I thought your point was well taken, and I certainly am a believer over the years I've been doing this that the process you employ is very important to follow as well. Now, whether we should have a set process for dealing with proposed conservation easements because of the varied nature of those things over time, I think that's why they have tended to get kind of customized, whether it's a 50, I'll use an example of a 50-foot conservation easement along one of our lakes or the one like we discussed at the recent meeting. But that's certainly something we could take a look at and have our city attorney and staff look at to see if they think that has merit to create some kind of a process around conservation easements. So, and Manager Neal is nodding his head affirmatively, so.
I think we said that at the council meeting, too.
Did we?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we are going to work on that.
All right. Very good. And I don't know if you stuck around to hear that, but at the last meeting, we were going to take a look at that. So, thanks for coming tonight, and thanks for your observations. Now, we're going to move on from community comment into our city manager's response to community comments that were made at the last meeting. And Manager Neal, have you got anything you wanted to comment on?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council. At our January 21st meeting, we had three speakers under community comment, no questions. We had some folks talking from Project, the Project Earth group from the high school. We had two representatives from Hindus of North America that talked a little bit about some collaboration they were doing with the police department. And Ms. Weston talked about the public forum, the community comment, but offered no questions.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that. Now, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and I know that Member Rissler wanted us to pull items 6.4 and 6.5. Do any other council members wish to have an item pulled off the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda with the exception of items 6.4 and 6.5?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion, second, to adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion. Member Pierce moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of those items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of items 6.4 and 6.5. With respect to the motion as stated, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the items on the consent agenda with the exception of items 6.4 and 6.5, which we'll take up individually, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. Items on the consent agenda are adopted with respect to items 6.4 and 6.5, and 6.4 involves a proposed resolution amending the 2025 budget that's embodied in Resolution 2025-14. I'm now going to turn to Member Rissler to hear what her concerns are with regard to that matter. Member Rissler.
I was specifically interested in knowing more about the 1% reductions, and when I look at the table, the top item, and this was to reduce the budget by 1%, which was agreed upon, and we voted and approved that, but seeing the $192,000 reduction from the police department caught my attention, and so I thought maybe we could learn a little bit more about that and the other items as well.
Sure. Thank you, Neal.
Member Rissler, members of council, I think the process that we used to come up with these savings is important to understand. We went to the executive leader, Assistant City Manager Lenz and I went to the members of the executive leadership team. We discussed the challenge that we got from the council and how to meet it. We received back from all of those different groups potential reductions in their budgets, and we used quite a number of them to get to this $545,000 reduction. The vacancy placement item in the police department is one that came from them, and I think the chief discussed it in the work session a little bit ago, just the challenges of moving people from civilian to cadet to police officer. And so, when they took a look at their budget and took a look at what they could possibly bring on this year, this amount was something that they thought they could use as part of the reduction and not have a material impact on their staffing levels.
Thank you. With the elections and administration, it sounds like this is a cost that we would not incur anyways. Am I reading that incorrectly?
Right. That's a good one because that's a number that we included in that budget. And then, when we went back to look at it for 2025, this will be the first year in, I think, four years, Ms. Allison, that we won't have an election this year, so that money is not, won't be spent because we won't have an election.
So, is that a budget reduction, or is that just not a cost that we're going to have?
That's a reduction. We're reducing that item in the expense budget in that department.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Member Rissler, having received that information, do you care to move the adoption of Resolution 2025-14?
So moved.
Second.
Member Rissler moves the adoption of the amended 2025 budget reflecting the 1% service reduction in those different categories embodied in Resolution 2025-14. We've got a motion by Member Rissler, as I stated, and the second by Member Pierce. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2025-14, amending the 2025 budget, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. Resolution 2025-14 is adopted. And then, Member Rissler, the next item you had as well, that was with respect to the potential adoption of the 2025 through 2030 capital improvement plan. Go ahead.
Correct. And I did not vote for this, and so this is, again, pulling an item that I previously did not support and being consistent with that. I still have concerns about the CIP, particularly in the introduction where it's noted that there is a significant increase going from 547 million, that's what it is, from a $300 million plan, and listed in that is 16 million for the France Avenue crossing at Gallagher and 72nd, and I do still have concerns about that. So, it's procedural. I want to be consistent with my vote.
Sure. Thank you for that. This might be a good opportunity for Manager Neal to express what we do from a process standpoint with respect to capital improvement and how that five-year capital improvement plan works regardless of the sequence of years that we're in.
So, thank you, Mayor, members of council. The first thing that we do is we take the existing five-year plan, and we try to make, try to build some consistency in whatever that CIP has into the future CIP. It's important that if we have a project that has council support, that we include the project even if it isn't fully funded, so that when we, as we march out towards those out-years, towards '27, '28, '29, we are constantly reminding ourselves that we have a project there that a council or a previous council wanted to do, and we need to build funding for it. So, we will build, if this is, if this item stays in the CIP and it stays in the next CIP, as we get closer to it, it gets more serious, and that gives, that gives the council, the city, and the city staff the authority they need to go forward and make plans.
Well, year one ends up being, and the capital improvement plan ends up being something as part of the budget for the following year.
Essentially, that's right.
But even in that situation, like our last budget, we removed some items from the capital improvement plan to get the budget reductions that we wanted to see as a council overall.
So, just because some, an item is in the CIP doesn't give staff 100% discretion to just go build it, right? In most cases, those projects exceed the $20,000 level, so it does give us the authority to plan it and to maybe acquire professional services to work on architecture or engineering, but we still come back to the council to approve a project and to award a contract.
Any other comments, questions? Member Rissler.
Briefly with this one, it's a project that has not had, gone before the public for an event, and we've talked about, you know, possibly having something like that, but I really do have issues with it and continue to have issues with that. So, thank you.
I want to ask you if you'll move the matter, then.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2025, or, excuse me, adopt the capital improvement plan for the years 2025 through 2030, as suggested by staff?
So moved.
Second.
Reagan moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the 2025 through 2030 capital improvement plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the capital improvement plan for the years 2025 through 2030, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed.
Nay.
Carried. The 2025 through 2030 capital improvement plan is adopted. All right. That completes our work in the consent portion of the agenda. We're going to now move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and we have one matter remaining in that portion of the agenda this evening, and that's a sketch plan review by some enterprising young gentleman who would like to get some council feedback on a proposed project they're thinking about on 5516 Vernon Avenue, and Carrie Teeger, Community Development Director, has the matter, and then we'll ask the applicants to come up and present their version of the project, and we'll have a conversation about it. So, Dr. Teeger.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'll just quickly tee it up and then turn it over to the potential applicants. So, this site is located west of Grandview, the Grandview area. It's located on Vernon. Property zoned R1, single dwelling unit district. It's guided in our comprehensive plan for low-density residential, which is our single-family residential area. Here's an area look at the site. It's about 38,000 square feet, so it's a large property located south of Highland School. There's another very large property to the east, 5508, little subdivision cul-de-sac off of Vernon to the west and Vernon Avenue to the south. Here's a look at the site. This is the site we're looking at, and then the adjacent single-family home. You can see it's, there's a row of trees that kind of separate that little cul-de-sac to the west. The proposal is to tear down that single-family home and build two townhome or duplexes. They would be two-story structures, about 3,000 square feet in size. A formal application would require an amendment to the comprehensive plan to low-density attached residential that would allow those two dwelling units or townhomes on the site, a rezoning to PRD-2, and a site plan review. Just quickly, looking at the PRD-2 zoning standards, this project would be in compliance with those. If you tuned into the planning commission, I mentioned a potential varia regarding usable lot area. We've recalculated that, looking at the definition, and actually, this project would comply. The code only excludes front-street setbacks and side-street setbacks. So, the area that I demonstrated at planning commission, the required setback areas are included in that usable lot area, so there would be no variance there. Issues and considerations, these two sites kind of sit on their, somewhat isolated from adjacent properties. When you look at the two sites together, there's that wetland to the east, Highland School to the north, and the single-family homes to the west. So, the amendment to the comprehensive plan, staff would suggest that both those lots be included to rezone to low-density attached. The existing single-family home to the east could remain under the low-density attached designation in their comprehensive plan. A single-family home would be allowed. Also want to touch on a somewhat similar situation to the west. It's the old Vernon development. Here's the site we're looking at. So, it's just to the west. This was a site that was rezoned from R1 to the PRD-2 that we're looking at this evening. It was, it was, the difference, however... It was, it was, the difference, however, is that it was guided in the comprehensive plan for low-density attached residential. That took place in 1997. Another thing just wanted to mention, this would be considered missing middle, not necessarily affordable housing, but in the construct of the development itself. They're looking at about $700,000 to $800,000 for values of each.
If you go back to old Vernon for just a moment.
Sure.
Yeah, and so that was zoned low-density attached.
It was zoned R1.
It was zoned R1, okay.
But it was guided in the comprehensive plan for low-density attached residential.
Okay. And what did it end up getting rezoned to?
To PRD2.
Okay. So it doesn't necessarily mean that you have to have buildings attached, because those aren't attached to each other.
Correct.
They're on zero lot lines.
They are.
But that, you have that flexibility too, under this zoning designation.
Under low-density attached, correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I will turn it over to the applicants.
Okay, let's check to see if anybody has any questions for you first, before we let you sit back down. Council members, questions for Director Teeger? Member Risher?
Can you go back to the chart? So with the proposed rezoning, it's not PRD2, but it is going to result in a potential of five units per acre, not six per acre. I only ask because I believe when I watched the planning commission, there were suggestions that they bump it up from four to six, and I kind of thought, does that really work with what is being requested?
Yeah, if that were to happen, it could bump it up into a medium-density.
Right, okay.
Designation, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions from council members for Director Teeger? All right, let's bring our applicants up here, and gentlemen, if you could introduce yourselves as you come up, so that we know, I see three names in the agenda here, and I'll let you tell us who's who, and then we'll hear about what you'd like to do over there at this particular location on Vernon Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you all for having us. We're excited to be here. And then am I pressing just the arrows? Okay, cool, cool. My name is Jordan Crockett with Abundance Properties. Today, we're going to walk through.
And Mr. Crockett, would you give us your business address too, please?
Yes.
For the record?
Off the top of my head, 6417 Penn Avenue, South Minneapolis.
Yeah, thank you.
But we'll talk a little bit about us, the proposal, the plan, and then we'll walk through some questions as well here.
Very good.
So, again, my name is Jordan Crockett. I'm the operations project manager here at Abundance.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, it's a little loud. Want to make sure I'm channeling my inner rock star, like Jennifer said. I'm Rashad Kendi, co-founder of Abundance Properties, along with Jordan and Darian. I also own and operate a separate entity, Kendi Property Development, specializing in new developments, remodels, mixed-use, multifamily, you name it, we've done it. I believe you guys have a packet that shows some of our track record, so a little bit about Kendi Property Development as well.
And I'm Darian Fletcher, and we make Abundance Properties. And at Abundance Properties, our mission is to create abundance through rehab and development of communities while empowering and educating others to do the same. So there is a project, actually, that we love to highlight, that we worked with a nonprofit out of South Minneapolis, PPL, and we have a video that really shows what that project meant to us as an organization, but more importantly, the community.
What's up, y'all? It's Chauncey Hollisworth with Abundance Properties. Y'all, it's cold out here. It's cold out here. When we first started this project, it was warm out, the sun was out, we had nice drone shots. None of that's happening now. It's cold, but we still got work to do. We've already done roofing, siding, plumbing, electrical, whatever you can think of, we've done it on this reseed project. And the last part of this is the windows, and that's what's happening right now. We're doing Chicago Avenue and Portland Avenue windows, and we're getting it done. The crew has been amazing, and this has been a fun project that we've been doing with PPL. So what I'm most excited about with the reseed program is how it's allowing emerging developers to add to their portfolio but not have to take on so much risk with grabbing properties that need a ton of work still. So this is a great opportunity for people within the community to now be able to continue to invest back into their community and not take on that much risk. Our team here at Abundance Properties have been excited doing this project with PPL because it's bringing forth equitable transformation here in South Minneapolis. The time is now, and legacy starts here.
All right, and that was our partner, Chauncey, who's not currently here. But that's just kind of emulates our team and what we've done, so it's exciting.
I'm sure that was a nice partnership for you with PPL, although it's a great organization.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Well, sweet, so while we're here today is 5516 Vernon Avenue, which we're proposing townhomes and a rezone. All right, so here's a beating potatoes for y'all. Why does it work, right? So the visual that you're seeing is actually from you guys' or a third-party U of M study that was done recently, probably 2024. But it shows essentially the recommended areas where density and rezoning should occur. And as you can see, our site is right there in those zones, which are recommended to be increased in density. And then that U of M study that was done, when it kind of comes down to it, it breaks down just the value of density and what's recommended in Edina or the purpose, essentially, which, you know, more density allows for more residents to work the jobs in Edina, which then decreases the vehicle miles traveled, which therefore decreases the greenhouse gases and everything as well, and overall, more usage of the transit system in Edina, which is very clear that you guys have noted, that you have a goal in 2030 to increase by double the usage of the transit system. So this is all, all in the line and in a circle with that. As far as the land use efficiency, right? So if, the question is, you know, if somebody were to give you an acre and you have the city in mind, you know, as a single-family, what you would decide to put there, right? So that's kind of the question there. And the last kind of piece is, is our team, we're a very dynamic team. We have a track record of success, and we are extremely capable. We also are invested in Edina. We own the lot. So we're here to partner with you guys and really do something special here.
All right, so four units, as we can see on the site plan, 3,000 square feet each, three beds, three baths. Now, I want to touch, talk a little bit about some of the materials that we're going to be using. So I'm going to start with the LP smart siding, lap, shakes, board, and batten, low emission manufacturing process with renewable materials, and then resistant to moisture, rot, and insects, reducing maintenance and waste. Aluminum sulfate in face, 100% recyclable, making it one of the most sustainable materials, requires little maintenance, eliminating the need for frequent repainting. Windows and doors, Anderson 100 series, made from fiberex composite, 40% reclaimed wood fiber stronger than vinyl. Low e-glass coatings reduce UV and infrared light penetration, and then energy-efficient exterior doors. Insulated core reduces heat transfer, and then low e-glass prevents excessive heat Low VOC interior and exterior paints improves indoor air quality by reducing harmful emissions. Eco-friendly with fewer pollutants contributing to sustainability. And then some of the mechanicals, I want to touch base on high-efficiency heating and cooling, 97%, high-efficiency furnace, gas tankless water heaters, reduces standby heat loss, improving efficiency by up to 30%. And then some of the electrical and smart energy features, LED lighting uses 75% less energy, lasts 25 times longer than regular light bulbs, smart thermostats, remote control of heating, cooling to minimize energy waste. Energy Star appliances reduces overall household energy consumption. High-efficiency exhaust fans reduces humidity while using less power, and then pre-wiring the garages for EV chargers for electric vehicles. And then with all that to say, we have carefully chosen materials that prioritize sustainability, energy efficiency, and durability. Our focus is on reducing energy consumption and waste while enhancing long-term value for homeowners in the community. And then the goal for the end would be owner occupants. And then each townhouse would also be plotted for ownership by surveyor and the county.
Thanks, Rashad Kendi.
All right, so when it, when it comes down to it, Edina's comprehensive plan, the climate action plan, the transit plan, everything leads to this goal of increasing density in targeted areas. The location and the size, you know, the stars are aligning here, where we own the property, we're ready to partner in an area that is a busy corridor where there is going to be a lot more transit, and as well as the size of the lot, we can really do something special with. And the last piece, it's super exciting what we're doing here, not just with the intention of this project, but a lot of the other projects we're doing. You know, we have the experience, the capabilities to really like over-deliver. So we'd love to share too, Rashad can give a little bit more context of some of the products we've done, you know, even some of the other stuff that he's done in Edina as well. So, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. I think a good place to start might be if you scroll back on your presentation to that site plan. There you go, just go back. There you go. Maybe that might be a good place to start. I'm going to turn to my colleagues here and see who has any comments they want to make or questions they have. Member Risher?
First, I want to thank you for bringing a sketch plan that really reflects the rezoning that you are requesting, okay? And I know that during the planning commission meeting, there was a lot about another project that did not get approved that was going for a comprehensive plan amendment. And the difference between what you are presenting and what was presented for that, it's just very extremely different, okay? And the ask that you're making is one that is like a little step, not a huge leap. And so I just wanted to get that out there. Now, my understanding is this is going to be architecture slab-built home on it? Okay. The one question I have is, can you talk about, you know, you've got severe weather. I've heard some slab homes have sort of a safe space in case that there's, you know, a big storm that comes up. I did actually experience, when I was growing up, a slab house that had a cellar that you could access through the garage, and I'm just wondering, what, what kind of space can somebody go to when that tornado warning happens?
Yeah, appreciate that question. So when you walk in, the front door to the right, there's a door into the garage, and then to your left, there'd be the staircase that goes up. Underneath that staircase, there's an area right there, as well as like the mechanical room. So as far as like tornado or extreme weather, out of that space, I feel like that would be the best location, underneath that staircase, next to the utility room.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Reagan.
Thank you, and thank you for a great presentation. I also loved the video, that was, was great. So when I'm looking at this, obviously, it's just showing the unit. You mentioned a garage, you just reiterated a garage here. Can you just give me maybe a little bit more insight into what the makeup is visually of that? Because I'm trying to imagine like driving in, seeing kind of garage after garage, and then there's also this parking area slab. So just walk me through a little bit more of the vehicular experience of the site.
For sure. So facing the, let's say, unit four and unit three, let's say you're facing that. So the garage is on the main level, I'm going to call it the main level, for both, for all four units. To the left is your entrance. You need to walk up the stairs to get to, I'm going to call it the second floor. Then that's your kitchen, that's your great room, there's a powder room right there with a toilet, vanity, pantry on that main level. So as far as the parking, it's on, first of all, I should say, as far as the parking, it's on that main level, underneath the kitchen, great room, and the powder bathroom.
So it takes up the bulk of that space?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's super helpful.
Also, and that garage is the utility room, even along with the space that I had mentioned as far as potential seeking safe place if needed.
Okay. And then is there also a driveway element here? Or not, like, I'm thinking of a driveway in the sense of parked cars in front of a garage?
Right.
Or does it kind of taper off pretty quickly and there's not that space for it?
So you would have two spots right there in front of the garage.
Okay. So they have two spots within the garage, and then two guest spots, or however you want to think of it, in front of the garage. Then speak to me about the idea of having then that additional parking and vehicular slab, and kind of like where my mind always goes is, you know, I do, there is quite a bit of yard, especially with units one and two in the backyard area, but wanting to really focus on where are the kids going to play, how can we reduce the impervious surface? I think I said that the correct way. So yeah, talk to me about the thought process there, please.
Yeah, so a little bit about the thought process, it's really just having an opportunity for guest parking, as far as like the street parking is limited, being as that busy road, so really just keeping guests in mind, and then people that may have more vehicles. You know, being that it's going to be a common interest community, we would put something in the declaration, giving rules and guidelines as far as, you know, who has what space, just so that, you know, unit two's not filling up all four spaces all the time. But that's kind of our thought process, just more parking for guests, as well as not really having options for a street parking.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. What does it feel like then, and all of this would obviously come out in like an actual proposal from like a visual standpoint, but on Vernon, unit four, does that feel like it's the front of that home, or what does it look like from the street view?
Yeah, so that's the side of the house.
Okay.
So yeah, so the staircase is on, you're facing it, it'd be on the left side, and then there'd be a few windows on that side.
Okay, because I always think about like, what's the experience with those homes on the street view as well? And I, I live in a house that there's only one way, and you have your driveway, and so the bulk of your house is, the front of your house is just the garage, right? I've dreamed of a corner unit where you can have like the front of the house be welcoming, and then like the vehicular component is on the side or on the back. And so I think that this could be an opportunity here to kind of, at least with unit four, move in some way the front of the house to be on Vernon, just when you think about kind of an inviting look and feel. And I understand that there's multiple other units, and that might not be as easy, but by having that garage kind of tuck in then to the side and have it still be kind of a statement front piece, I think it could be really beautiful and inviting. I don't think I have any other questions at this point. Should I also be giving general other feedback? I know I kind of embedded some feedback. Okay. Overall, I do, I like it. I like incrementally increasing. I love having a statement of support as well from our affordability housing managers is really supportive of this as well, it seems like. So the feedback that I have is more of like, how can we continue to make it jive with the neighborhood? And so when I see like four parking stalls in addition to, I would, at least in my kind of understanding of this neighborhood, there's probably no other sites where you're going to have additional parking in that sense. So I just think of like, okay, what's, what's the use case for that? Thinking even to my own neighborhood, like, I guess. Thinking even to my own neighborhood, like, yes, I do have street parking for when I have holiday parties or whatever. So I understand that balance, but I also want it to still feel like a home. And so I know that's kind of hard feedback to sift through. I would like to get rid of it from a character and an appeal, a visual appeal perspective as well as optimizing and focusing on the green space. But I also understand there are other constraints that you're working with and you probably know your target market more. So that's kind of what I'm weighing in my head right now.
Thank you for the feedback.
Member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So this, this location is around the block from where I live. So when I walk past there, I have often looked at that house off in the distance, thinking, what we really need if somebody would buy that and redevelop that for medium density. And so I applaud you for the creativity and the use of the space. I, I had a similar question in terms of when you're walking by there. It's actually in a unique spot where the houses aren't traditional, where they face the front road like a typical neighborhood would be. Like there's one in the back, there's another one that's kind of tucked away. So it's a little unique in that way. And so I thought it was very creative actually to have some parking within the, the lot for that reason. I totally get where member Agnew is going, but I did like the way you, you kind of thought through that. I like that it's owner occupied. I think it's a really well thought out, it's really well thought out in plan, the, the way you have, have the design so far. I wouldn't increase it to five or six, I would stick to four. And actually, for the same reason that member Agnew gave, I think, you know, five or six starts to not, in my opinion, kind of fit in with the neighborhood. I think four townhomes to me feels like it would, would fit better. I do want to see more of the interior. And then I got a question for you, and it may sound odd, but how much money have you put into getting to this point?
Yeah, so, great question. We, like Jordan said, we are committed. We bought the land, had a vision for it from the beginning before we closed on it. And, you know, so we've had to engage with our draftsman, our, our architect, civil engineer, they had to work together as well as surveyor to do our, to get the certificate of survey, the topography of that. So we're at least a few thousand dollars in.
Okay.
And it would be more if I didn't have those relationships already, if I was engaging with people that I haven't worked for nine plus years. We could have been 10, 15,000 and just to get to this point.
And so excluding the cost of the land, I should, I could have said it that way, that's what I'm, that's where I was going. Because I, I felt like what you presented, and it's kind of the member Risher's point earlier, it felt like, to me, what I think a sketch plan should be, like you had three slides, four slides, one slide that really talked about the project, and then you spoke to it to get feedback. And then what I think you will need to do then is take that feedback and then go to the next step. And so it, it feels like it's the right balance to me for a sketch plan. So that was why I asked that question. And then the last thing I'll add, when we talked about affordable housing, I'm going to say last year, I was doing work with Stephanie Hawkins, and we talked about, are there ways to get other developers into Edina to do smaller projects like this? We talked about emerging developers and, like, that's what, that's what this is to me, being able to find a developer that can come in, has some expertise, smaller scale, that can now understand what we want as a community and then figure out how to make that happen. So I like this. The last piece of feedback I give you, you're going to get a lot of feedback. I think it's, it, it, there is, there's a danger, and this is also going to sound weird, into listening to all of us for all the things that we want. And then taking that as we have to go do this. And that's not what we're looking for. So if there are things that you're hearing, we would encourage the dialogue, right? Just as you did for the, the parking. So don't shy away from giving the dial, engaging in the dialogue and giving us, hearing our feedback and then asking questions to really understand what we're looking for. But I, I like it and I would encourage you to keep going to the next steps.
Member Risher, this dialogue has caused member Risher to think of something else she wanted to talk to you about.
People do care a lot about trees, especially oak trees, mature ones. And my understanding is there's three clusters of oaks on the site. I haven't actually gone out to see it, but when you come back, if you could have those trees and if there's a way, even if you have to shift a little bit so that you can preserve some of those. The other thing is just, you know, having pounded the pavement, running for office, going down Kellogg, in the summer, you feel it when you're in front of all the new houses that don't have a mature tree and then you get to the older part. And it just physically, it felt so great. And then there's also the value of if you can preserve some of those oaks, it lends an air of, you know, this kind of idea that the place has been there for a long time. And I think that would add value. And just the temperature differential during the summer, if you could sit under a tree instead of not having a tree. But I did, and to member Agnew's point, anything that you can do to reduce the amount of impervious surface would be fantastic. And, you know, I don't know if some of that could be the surface material you use for the driveways and the parking areas or something like that. I have no idea. But that could be a really good thing. And then I did just do a dropdown on Vernon Avenue with Google Maps. And a lot of the houses that are along Vernon, it's the side view, not the front view. And so I, I kind of feel like I see where member Agnew's coming from, but I think that would be a really big ask to, you know, turn and put the front of that first house facing Vernon. I think that would be kind of a tall order. So there's that. And then just also to member Pierce's point, the last project that was mentioned many times at the planning commission, when it came back for final review, it had tandem parking near the entrance between the dumpster and the entryway because of all of the suggestions that had been made. Okay. You have to reject, you can't. I mean, and, and I really do think the four units work beautifully, they fit really well. We also have an ADU ordinance, and I don't know with the amount of space that you have, and I haven't looked at the regulations for that, but, you know, potentially, somebody who purchased one of these could also pop in an ADU. So I, I think what you have here works incredibly well, and I just want to emphasize that.
Thank you, member Risher. Could you get that site plan back up there again, please? I don't know what happened to it. There you go. Thank you. Yeah, so you're going to hear us say some of the same things different ways. And some may resonate and some may not. But I thought, I remember Agnew's idea was an interesting one on unit number four. You know, and at least have your architect look at it. I get what she's talking about in terms of facing Vernon, and I understand member Risher's point as well. But it wouldn't hurt to at least ask the architect if you, if you rotated that unit number four 90 degrees, that's still your common wall on the north side, right? And there's no, there's no windows, there's, that's a common wall. So there, there's nothing on that wall anyway, so, and that's a good wall to have nothing on facing north. Anyway, take a look at that issue. In terms of the member Agnew's issue about the, or not issue, but comment she raised about the guest parking, those four stalls, and making it feel like there's a residential transition that's, that's real soft and gentle from a single-family neighborhood to, let's say, four units. And I think we're all in accordance that four fits nicely on the site. You got guided very well by our planning department who helped you look at PRD2 and land on PRD2 and total compliance with PRD2. That's a really good thing. So you could look at where those guest spots are, I think, look at previous pavers, where the grass grows up through the pavers. So it feels a bit more like yard, but it still accomplishes the same purpose of providing a place for people to park, just a suggestion or idea you could look at. The trees was top of my list, member Risher went back to that in her second comments. So I think, you know, to the extent that there are fully mature trees along that west lot line, you should try to preserve as many of those as possible for the reasons she expressed. And if you haven't looked at our tree ordinance, that will give you encouragement to preserve as many as you can.
I've seen it.
Yeah. And some of it, you know, in terms of the building pads, you're, you're going to get some forbearance there, you know, on what's required. And we see that some of these things are inevitable, that you're going to take some of those trees down. But I'd say that the extent that you even had to move things a little bit further east to accommodate trees on the west, don't be afraid to think about that either. And we're just giving you ideas to think about. Member Pierce asked about the interiors, and there's one, one of your first slides, I think, had a beautiful photo of an interior. And I don't know if that was kind of what you're striving for or right there. If that's, if that's the level of finish you're striving for, it looks beautiful, you know? And, and on the next go-around, that we'll see more detail around all of that. And, but that's, you know, that what you chose there to show us is really quite striking, quite beautiful. And then, as mentioned, unit count, interior, pricing range, any expectation yet on what kind of range you'll be in price-wise per unit?
Yeah, so the, as far as the range, it is closer to, and, and, you know, a lot depends on construction, but it is around that, you know, 750 to 950.
Okay.
Range.
Yeah, we, I mean, we've, we understand that. I mean, we, you know, if you saw the ones further up Vernon behind Wells Fargo Bank, we thought we were going to get the missing middle there. And the missing middle for us, we all had a different definition than the new missing middle. But there in that, you know, that, there may be a little bit more expensive than that, but in that same range. So we, we kind of understand that. We wish they were lower priced, but we, we get it, you know, land, labor, lumber. It's a, it's a different world out there now. So I think that, I mean, I think the level of finish that you put on them is, is going to be important if you're at that price point. So people are going to, people are going to be expecting a high level of finish, exterior and interior. And, and I take it it's a double garage?
Correct.
Okay. Not, not tandem, but just side by side, conventional double garage. Okay. That's about all I had. So I think you probably, between the planning commission and the city council, you've, you've gotten food for thought and you guys lots to make the decision on something, you bought the land, so you're going forward.
You got it.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll wait to see on the next go-around. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to, we've handled member Agnew's matter at the beginning of the meeting. I don't think there's been any new correspondence that's come in during the course of the meeting. I'm going to turn now to manager's comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to give the council an update on a couple of things. First, our tactical training center project out at the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility. During the early stages of that project, that all early-stage projects involve digging a hole in the ground, we encountered some obstacles that they weren't expecting in, in that process. So that project has kind of stalled for the moment. They are going to resume the, the grading and the construction of the project and do still believe they can make a summer, a June-July 2025 deadline for the construction of the, of the site. When we do have a site ready for, for occupancy, we'll do some kind of an event and invite council members out there so you can see what it is. State legislative activities, even though the, the House is not seated, we are still, we are still having meetings with members of the House and members of the Senate with regards to our legislative platform. We've already had a discussion with House leaders on the bonding bill side, talked a lot about our, we had a discussion to talk about our bridge project and the pool aquatic center project. We spent the entire time talking about the, the bridge project and MINDOT did not get to talk about our pool project. So we will be talking to Senate leaders about those projects and about the extensions that we're requesting for two TIF districts sometime next week and have the first discussions around that. Also wanted to give you an update on where we are with regards to kind of monitoring our federal funds. We, as a, our city government does not receive much in the way of federal funds. If you look at our, our total spend for proposed 2025 or approved 2025, it was right around $211 million. That, that's all the dollars we spend on people, commodities, professional services, street construction projects of all kinds, et cetera. Of that total, about $595,000 of it comes from federal sources. That's just, that's about a quarter of 1%, so it's not very much. Of that total, $595,000, $425,000 of it is in the general fund and, and about $170,000 is, is CDBGs, Community Development Block Grant. So again, small percentages, we are monitoring, it's not insignificant money. We have somewhere around $2 million in grants in addition to those operating funds that we're looking at here. Some of our funding that is money that's obligated but no contract available to sign, so that's money at risk, is a US DOE Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, $119,000. But we have a number of other grants that are, that are, that have been funded and have been, and we have signed contracts for. We expect those kind, those contracts to be fulfilled. And we're also looking, we're also working with League of Minnesota Cities and also the US Conference of Mayors. They both have set up resources for cities and elected officials alike, city staff and elected officials. If you'd like to go on and see this kind of information, they've, on both their websites, they're pretty easy to find. And I, Jen, can we turn on the? So part of what I, I wanted to do, I think I said this at our last council meeting, is sometimes when you're considering a, a policy change, it's good to have something to look at and, and pick apart. I, I've drafted a proposed change to community comment based on some of the comments that I've heard from council members previous to tonight. Again, this is, this is something that will look a lot like what we already do. Work sessions would start at 5:30 and would be completed at 6:30. Like, we'd take, you know, a few minutes to come down and get settled and get in front of, get on the dais, start community comments at 6:40 and no later than seven, because council meeting would start at seven. Community comment would be conducted in the city council chambers and per the same kind of rules of procedure that already apply about what's, what's eligible, do we comment on, what's not eligible. There's no back room or closed door anymore than there, there is today. All current rules still apply. Community comment isn't televised or recorded in this, in this scenario. And I would give you a recap on the previous meeting's community comment, just like we used today. So there's, there's a thousand ways to do this, this is one way to do it. If it's, if you want further discussion on this as a group, this is your first time you're seeing this, I wanted to share it with you in this format. If there's, if there's interest in pursuing it, we can pursue it at another meeting.
I think in fairness to council member Jackson, who had to be in Des Moines for a family medical situation, I'd like to have her input on this. And so I think giving us kind of a sneak preview of what your thoughts are based on input that you've gotten, both from the council and from, or some council members and, and... input that you've gotten, both from the council and from, or some council members and the public. I think we should take this up another time when she's present so that we can have her input as well.
I had no expectation of action tonight. I just wanted to give you, as you said, a preview of it so that you could be ready to have some discussion about it and maybe have some questions about how it could work.
Even if we decided we wanted to stay just the way we were, I think still we need Councilmember Jackson here.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay. Yep, Member Agnew.
Thank you. And maybe even prior to that, or if we build it into a broader conversation, I think in addition to the slide that you had on there, having something that, and it can be a part of our conversation, focuses in on the goals. Like, what are we hoping to achieve by doing this, I think would be a really good way to root the conversation. So whether you, we collect that ahead of time and have a visual to denote that, or whether it becomes the focus as we initiate that conversation when we have it, I think that will be important to carry through.
Thank you. Member Risher.
This is a topic, and I have received a lot of email about it. And I know residents are concerned, a lot of, I think pretty much everyone who has written to me has said that they want to keep it the same format. And what's frustrating is I heard a lot of people say, "I'm looking at the agenda. I don't see it." I heard at the last meeting that we were going to talk about community comment at the February 4th meeting, that it was announced, and I don't see it on the agenda. There's nothing there. And do you know what happened? And I couldn't respond because I didn't know what happened. And now I see on my screen, item 9.1 is community comment proposal. That's not on my agenda that I have before me. It's not something that the public was able to see. And so I think on this one, we have to do better when it comes to transparency. And, you know, we can talk about waiting until, Member Jackson is here, and I do think that's important, but it's also important to let the public know when we're going to talk about it. So if we're going to talk about it at a future meeting, I think what we're going to talk about needs to be on the agenda. I think item 9.1 needs to be added to the packet that is available online, and the slide that we just saw needs to be added to that as well, so the public can see that. I think that's really important.
Thank you. Manager Neil.
I think this has been entirely transparent. I'm sharing it with you in this format is an act of transparency. If you choose not to advance it, that's okay. But I just wanted to give you something to start with. And nine, the nine items are just the items that are under my comment, and sometimes I'm developing that list right up until the council meeting, the day of the council meeting. So that's where that comes from.
Yeah, okay. I think irony in the situation tonight is the fact that it wasn't on the agenda allowed the person that called in to talk about it, which was, would otherwise have been inappropriate. So nonetheless, a point taken, Member Risher. And I think when we do get to the point where we want to have a broader conversation about it, we can, you know, it'll be, I'm sure if you've got some slides put together, they'll be part of the, part of the agenda deck. Any other comments you wanted to cover? Manager Neil? Okay. And I go down to Member Agnew, who I've ignored for starting for a couple of weeks or a couple of meetings, I think.
I feel like I'm always first, but --
Oh, well.
No, I, maybe it's just personal bias. So I didn't put together like a ton of thoughts on this necessarily, but there have been a lot of things happening at the national level within our community. And I know that we're starting to think about and experience ways that it's impacting us locally as well. You know, personally, my daughters, three and five, go to Spanish Immersion Daycare here in Edina. We absolutely love it. It's been an amazing experience for them. But we got an email this week that talked about the impact of changes to immigration and what that might mean for staffing levels and being able to provide the same level of care. And so I think that that caused me to have a conversation with Scott Neal and just think about what are some of the other ways that we're starting, starting to feel this within our community? And I guess I even have a question, I don't know, putting you on the spot, of what does some, what do some of these changes mean? And I'm kind of looking over at Chief Milburn here, because I don't know if you can even reflect on if there's any impacts to our police department and the ways that we're doing policing within the community. But before I hand it over, like, that's just something that is top of mind for me. And I, like I said, I didn't have a ton more to say about it, but I think we are starting to feel some local impacts.
If you hold that thought, I was going to bring up the Polar Plunge that you're participating in, which is ICE of one type, and then we can go to Member Agnew's ICE discussion as well. So hold that thought till we get a little deeper here. Member Pierce.
Nothing from me tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
So let me talk about the Polar Plunge. I did a mayor's minute on it tonight, and that is at Lake Nacomus on February 28th. It is a fundraiser for Special Olympics Minnesota, and our police department has a team. And we're trying to raise, or they're going to try to raise $2,000. That's their goal. And there's a website that you can go to to donate to the cause, and that is reg-plungemn.org/team/EdinaPoliceDepartment. No one will ever forget that URL. So just, but just in case, I'll read it again. And those participating in the February 28th event for the City of Edina Police Department at Lake Nacomus will be the chief, Lieutenant Jake Hecart and Ryan Schultz, Community Engagement Officer Nick Donahue, Officers Evan Miller and Nick Navejas, Cadet Mark Kayla Riley, and Reserve Officer Steve Koenig. So council members too, keep in mind, if you want to help support our team and competing against other police departments and Special Olympics Minnesota, you know, think about getting on that website and making a contribution. Or maybe you can do it right through the PD.
You have to go on the website, Mayor. Yep.
We will for sure have a link with the video.
This is important to follow the process here.
Yeah, well, I was thinking, the check could be written to Special Olympics Minnesota, not to the Edina PD. But nonetheless, okay, we'll follow the process. And then to the federal issues that Member Agnew alluded to generally, I sent to, I don't know if she's got these out to you or not, I got a document from the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and if you click on the various categories of immigration, energy and environment, transportation, health, technology innovation, you'll see what the potential impact is on cities in some of those areas. And then with respect to immigration, I think, did everybody get an email from some reporter looking to talk to somebody about how we would act compared to the city of Minneapolis? And I thought, well, that's a good topic, as you sort of instinctually thought, Member Agnew. Let's ask the chief about what our position has been from our PD. First of all, thanks for doing the Polar Plunge, and then we'll move on to the ICE in a different way.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's cold. I did this last year, and so I'll do it again this year. It's fun for, it's for a good cause, so I'm looking forward to that. As it relates to immigration, I've been through this before, about eight years ago, and so everyone knows I used to work in Brooklyn Park. And back there, we got a lot of questions about same similar topics that were going on. That experience prompted me here internally about a month ago to start working on a policy that we have, just to kind of reinforce a practice that's been in play now for a number of years. And that practice is ICE, people need to look at ICE as different than local authorities, and so they operate in a different space than we do. So in other words, we get a lot of questions about during traffic stops, do we ask about immigration status? We do not. That's not the focus of our work. We look, we look at local and focus on local issues, enforcing state statute ordinances and things like that, and that's a different threshold than what ICE operates under. We get questions about sweeps, if there are sweeps going on, do we participate in that? And we do not. ICE has a civil process with detainers and holds, and there was some work that was done with Hennepin County Jail several years ago, and they spelled out that they do not participate in that either. So as ICE goes in the federal thresholds and the things that they look at, they have information on the backend, right? So if somebody's booked and processed, they have access to that data, understanding that somebody was booked or arrested for any particular crime, and they can do their follow-up accordingly, but they don't ask us, and we don't participate in that. So there's just these differences that are in practice. The policy that we put together really just spells that out, so it's really clear for community, and it's also clear for our staff on what those guardrails are. We ran it through our MAC group, which is our multicultural advisory committee, and we showed that to them about three weeks ago, and they were really appreciative of it and gave us good feedback. This meets what our expectations would be for the local authorities as well. So we're just on the very back end of that policy, completing that, and then we'll post it to our website. All of our policies are on our website, and we'll publish that so everyone can see exactly what our roles and responsibilities are in this matter. The only difference is if we're working and looking at a local crime, so if we have a local assault, for example, and there's some kind of an immigration tie to that that ICE might be looking at as well, there could be a connection that way. But we have to operate under a warrant that might be issued for anybody or an active local criminal investigation. Those are the only connections that we would have a focus on or any kind of interactiveness with this topic moving forward. So I'll stand for any questions on that, though.
Questions for the chief or follow-on? For information, no? Oh, yeah. Thanks for that.
Could I add one thing, too?
Sure.
A lot of communities are going through this, and so we at the Hennepin County Chiefs' level put together a statement, and that was released about two, three days ago to all local media, just to kind of explain our position. And all the police departments in Hennepin County that I've talked to and know are all operate under the same threshold as well.
Good, thanks for that. Only one other item, and it was, I've had a personal experience on this and then people calling me on the bag fee. And I was in Walgreens, and the guy said, "Well, that'll be a dime." I said, "Well, I thought it was a nickel." And he said, "Well, we raise it to a dime." And then today I got a call from a resident who said, he was at some grocery store, and they said it was going to be a dime or 15 cents. And so I asked Manager Neil about this issue. I thought that we had set the fee on what it was going to be at a nickel, but apparently the ordinance is crafted in a way, Mr. Kendall will know this as well, that they could, they can charge more for the bag if they want. So it kind of begged the question for me of, did we head in a good direction? I know I was the only one that didn't like the idea of it initially, but with the merchants now raising the fee for bags, we're the ones that are being looked at as being responsible for whether it's 10 cents, 5 cents, 10 cents, 15 cents, whatever the price of the bag is. They think that we're the ones that caused that, and maybe we, maybe we were with the ordinance. But just a little food for thought, and I'd like to look at, look at it in a little bit more depth. I don't know quite how to go about it, if we should have the Energy and Environment Commission look at it again, or what would be the appropriate mechanism if the council wanted us to look at it again? I think that's probably the threshold question, not just me.
It would be.
Yeah.
We would want some kind of council direction.
The council as a whole will actually decide on a majority basis whether or not they wanted to revisit the bag fee issue.
You know, we could, we could certainly do some analysis after defined length of time, maybe it's a year, maybe it's something else, to give you a sense of what's been the impact of this. But our ordinance just set a floor, you know, of 5 cents, and if people wanted, if merchants or retailers want to charge more than that, that's, it's just like any other product in their store, they set the price of it.
And one of the arreynies of it is, I had a young woman stop me, I was over at Jerry's, and I was in line, and she came up and she had a plastic bag full of asparagus, and she said, "This isn't costing me a nickel, but the bag they put it into is going to cost me a nickel." You know, "And the meat I just bought in the plastic container, that doesn't cost me a nickel." You know, so there's this, I don't know if you'd call it inconsistency, but it's a mixed message, you know, I think. But so anyway, when Member Jackson gets back here, maybe we can talk about the issue a little bit more and decide in one of these old more informal conversations at the end of the meeting, if we want to send it back to HRRC to look at it a little bit more in-depth.
I do think, and I actually remember Member Pierce really pushing on this, of coming back with the data. And I know that that was a large part of the discussion that we had, of being able to see, is this having the impact that we want it to? Working with retailers to understand kind of pre and post numbers of bags being used, and are we decreasing that number? And if I recall, we did expect a year of data, and I think it took effect in July. So my recommendation would be, we'd still talk about it this year, but we wait for that year mark to hit and get the data, compile the data, and then bring it up maybe later in the summer, early in the fall for discussion.
We're at a year and a half, so Marissa's trying to collect data right now. She's collecting and requesting the information right now.
That's correct, but it went into place in July. So we are, we've sent out letters to all of the businesses, and we've issued press releases and other communications with the requirement that they report by the end of March for their experience from July through the end of 2024.
Member Risher, about seven minutes.
On the topic of plastic bags, my thing is that I have taken the plastic-free challenge, and on Sunday I did go to the Grandview Library, and we had a really amazing presentation from Gabriella Rosso, who is the Green Corps person for Edina, and she did just a fabulous job. And so I did, for the first time, bring my own durable plastic containers to the co-op to get refills on oatmeal and all that, and it wasn't that hard, but I had never done it before. So anyway, there are things you can do to reduce the amount of plastic bags that you're using, or just try to step away from plastic. And I am really trying to be dedicated about capturing the plastic that flows through my life, including the little plastic ball that was in my non-alcoholic Guinness can, which is really weird, but it's there. So it's there everywhere, and that is all I have.
All right. That's a good suggestion, Member Agnew. Let's wait and get the data after a year and take a look at it.
Yeah, especially with it being right around the corner.
Yeah.
Mayor, just one more comment on that. I think the city can be clear that the ordinance requires the 5-cent charge, it doesn't require anything more than that. If merchants want to charge more than that, they're free to do that. I don't think the city could probably stop them from doing that, but the ordinance only requires the 5-cent charge.
Here's at least one argument, we gave them a pretty good idea. But Member Agnew's raised a great point, and that is, let's see what the impact has been, and then we can look at.
Absolutely.
By then, we'll have more feedback from, I think, our residents, too, about the experiences they're having on increased bag fees. So, okay, that's all I had. Manager Neil, I have one more thing.
I'm sorry, one final thing that I had on my list here but didn't get to. That is, last week, we were able to honor our own Chad Milner, who was selected as City Engineer of the Year from Minnesota City Engineers Association.
All right.
Just for this one year, though, that's all. And then somebody else gets it after that. Well, maybe he'll get it again, but he got it at least this year. We're very proud of him.
In the world of being honored, it then has caused me to remember that while I was out of town last Friday, they had the funeral for Willard Echola, and I'm sure that was quite a great celebratory event. So our best thoughts to his family and all of his friends that cared so deeply about him, all those students that he had, all those lives he influenced, it just, he was an incredible human being. So that's it for the evening of February 4th, 2025. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second.
If Pierce moves, Member Agnew seconds the motion to adjourn the city council meeting for the City of Edina this Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, at 8:38 PM. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of German, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. City Council.